Want to call to order the meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for January the 22nd, 2024. We'll ask that everyone please stand at this time and join me in prayer in our pledge of allegiance to our country. Most gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this day that you've given us the sunshine that we all ask that warms us all from the cold that we've experienced this past week. Father, we're so thankful for the many things we have, but may we always remember that the things that we do have come from you. Father, we're so thankful for this county that we have, the abundance that we have within this county, the opportunities it gives us, and we ask today that you give us the wisdom to look after the business of this county, and you watch over and protect us and guide us. We offer this prayer in your son's holy name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag. You may be seated. We'll begin with our roll call and determination of quorum.
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Mike Kush.
Here.
Bogel.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Craig Gooch.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. We'll move now into item four, which is the election of chair and vice chair for calendar year 2024. Mr. Demossi, do... Chairman from our election committee?
Yes, sir. Thank you. As you are aware, during our meeting in December, we did nominate a committee to choose a chair and vice chair for calendar year 2024. That committee was made up of Ms. Charlotte P., Mr. Jim Everwater, and Mr. David Jones. I didn't have a chance to discuss this prior to the meeting with either of those two gentlemen, but I think I'll ask Mr. Everwater if he'd like to make the recommendation.
Thank you, Doug. The committee has met and has nominated for president to maintain Pettis Reed and for vice chair Lee Bogel, and with that, we make a motion for your approval.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Gentlemen, congratulations.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that confidence that you have put on us. This next year should be an interesting year for this commission for many reasons. We are getting ready to look at a comprehensive plan. We hope that will make some changes within this county, a comprehensive plan that we hope that will be something that can help us out and guide us in some places we need to go as far as this county is concerned, and as chairman, I'll do my best to look after what we need to be doing. We'll move now into the approval of our minutes, but we do not have any IC, so we'll just go and pass that item right now. And public comments, have we received any?
No, sir, we have not.
No public comments. Moving into items withdrawn or deferred. Mr. Demossi.
No items have been withdrawn or deferred.
We're moving pretty swoof right through here this morning. So now going into new business, item eight, going to item A, submitted for final plat approval, Smotherman Estates, 23, 284, 44 lots on 112.97. Zoned RL located along Jones Road, Hollins Head Land LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good morning, everyone. The plan for this preliminary plan for this development was approved by the commission back in March of 2020. This final plat does appear to be consistent with that approved preliminary plan. You know, you'll recall that we've removed the density bonus for RL, well, for RM lots in the RL district. However, this was approved prior to that, so this is a legal subdivision. There's no issue there. I just wanted to at least point that out. Most of staff's comments on this have been addressed. There's a few housekeeping items that still need to be taken care of, but nothing that we feel would rise to the level of having to ask for a deferral of this. These things should be taken care of prior to any recording of this plat. So with that, we would recommend approval subject to those conditions, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions, comments?
Average lot size, Doug. What size lots are these?
These are all at least 15,000 square feet and larger.
Move to approve with staff comments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Jones. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Item two, Last Cassis Estates, section two, 242001, 51 lots on 15 acres, zone PUD located along Last Cassis Pike, Ellington Residential applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the commission back in March of 2022. Again, this final plat does appear to be consistent with that approved preliminary plan. The majority of our comments have been addressed. There are a couple of outstanding items. Again, these are housekeeping items, nothing that should affect any kind of an approval with this, just as long as this is made subject to, any approval is made subject to all staff comments, but again, we'd recommend approval of this.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve subject to those staff comments.
Now, Everwater moves to approve. Have a second. Commissioner Bogel, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Moving into item three, Chesterfield Reserve, McGowan Subdivision, 242004, five lots on 13.90 acres. Zone RL located along Canesville Pike and Canada Drive, Clark Powers and France Construction LLC are the applicants. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the commission back in September of last year. Again, this plat does appear to be consistent with that approval. There was a pre-construction meeting recently held on this development, and most of our comments have been addressed. Again, what's remaining is primarily housekeeping, nothing that should impact a approval here today. With that, we'll be happy to answer any questions, but we do recommend approval.
Commissioners. Mr. Bogel.
I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Motion approved. Commissioner Bogel. Second, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Moving into item nine, staff reports and other business. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. A couple of things for your consideration. The first is the year-end report. We have placed that on your iPads, on the SharePoint for you to review. This just kind of gives you just a, just kind of a quick overview of what we've seen as a development patterns over the last year in the county. You'll see that the mic's kind of going through the part of the available lot inventory. As of last month, at the end of the year, we were looking, I think, about 900 available lots that are on the ground currently, those that could be, you know, developed at any point, taking building permits out. These are all recorded subdivisions. I call special attention to the graph, the graphs at the end of that report, just to kind of give you a better idea as to what we're looking. Here we go. You'll see the trend line there when we started looking at this from January 2009 through December of 2023. Of course, when we started tracking this, it was pretty much at the height of the recession that we had back in, you know, '09 timeframe. You can see the highest the lot count ever got since we've been tracking it at least was about 1,688, and then we went through several years of a pretty sustained downward trend in the number of available lots. There was just a lot of activity going on, and we bottomed out about 548. And again, this is just what's in the unincorporated county. This doesn't include what's in the municipalities or anything. In the last several years, you can kind of see it's kind of trended up and then back down and back up and down again, and kind of where we are right now in the 900 range for December of 2023. A lot of things go into this. Of course, lately, it's been, you know, just with the housing prices increase as far as the interest rates and everything, that's really played a part in permit activity and those kind of things. Mike, go ahead and go to the next chart if you don't mind. This kind of gives you an idea of the number of development lots we have right now that are still under the development tax, those subdivisions that are still under that versus those of the schools' facilities tax. Of course, when we first started that back in 2021, obviously, there was a high point there. Now, that number for development tax, the blue line, that number's never going to get any bigger than it is, so you can see that that has been trending downward, and will continue to trend downward. At some point, it'll zero out, but it seems like when I look at the reports every month that we get from our building codes office, there's usually just a handful of lots in these subdivisions that are still under the development tax. So it's kind of a slow trend, but it is still going down. Obviously, the schools' facilities tax, that's the one we finally saw about, I looked like in August of 2022, we saw the number of those subdivision lots under schools' facilities tax overtake those in the development tax. That's the one that's going to trend up, trend down, all over the place kind of a thing, just to kind of give you an idea of what that looks like. And the next chart is basically, it's the same information, but kind of gives you more of a percentage breakdown, if you will. You can see at the beginning, most of the lots were in the blue, which was the development tax. There was only a handful that were in the schools' facilities tax, those in the red. So as time has gone on, you can see that the percentage makeup of those under schools' facilities tax has increased versus those with the development tax. Again, that's expected, just a different way to look at the data. Go ahead and go to the next slide, Mike. This just tracks the total number of lots recorded in plats that had four or more lots. We've changed the way we classify major versus minor. That's, under the older code, it was the number of lots. Anything four lots or greater was a major subdivision, three lots and under was a minor. We've changed that, but we've kept the methodology the same, just so we can compare apples to apples. But again, you can kind of see what's been going on since 2004. In the last couple of few years, you can see it's kind of been over the map there, you know, and it's went up to 943, then down for a couple of years into the 600 range. Of course, that was during the pandemic when we were really in the throes of that, and then things rebounded pretty strongly in 2022. But again, going back to all the interest rates and different things we've been talking about, that's back down to 567. We really saw a slowdown in the number of plats and things submitted this past year, and so far, I mean, as evident even by today's agenda, there just wasn't a whole lot of plats on it. I don't expect just a whole lot really in February either. Now that, depending on market conditions and things, that may change over time, but for now, it's, it seems to be consistently a little down from what we've seen. And go ahead and go to the next one. This next one here is the rezoning applications we've seen since 2009. You can see this is all over the map. I'm not even going to try to understand why it's the way that it is. It's, it's been like this for years. Some years, we get a lot more, some years, we don't. You know, I can understand during 2010, 2011-ish, you know, that was again during the, during the recession, we didn't see quite as much activity. Things really started rebounding for a while, then it's just, it's just all over the place. Last year, we were down from the year before, as you can see, by about seven different applications. Now, of course, first month this year, we had six, so who knows? We'll see what 2024 holds. And then our last chart here, you can see, this is the board of zoning appeal cases. Of course, planning commission doesn't get as involved in BZA issues, but you can see it's definitely been a downward trend over the last several years. The result of that really has been just the changes to the development zoning codes that we've made, different things that don't require requests anymore to go to the board of zoning appeals. Of course, you did see a little bit of an uptick in 2023, but you know, as far as activity going forward, I would expect probably the same, just to maintain that downward trend or at least in that general area. So that kind of gives you just a, just a brief idea and an overview of what we've seen here in the last year, just from an activity standpoint. So I'll be happy to entertain any questions that anyone may have based on that.
I'm always the guy, Ben, I'm the newest guy, Mr. Chair, with the questions that help me on these lots. I notice we've got several previous that are, subdivisions look like they've invested and left several lots on the table. Any kind of timeframe or if the county changes the way they do business as far as these taxes? I was going to understand a little bit, when you talk about the development tax lots versus the schools' facility tax lots, can you tell me a couple of questions? What's the difference in those two? And then is there a limit for someone that gets a lot approved and they've held it now for 20 years? Are they grandfathered in?
Well, the difference between the two is the amount that, under the development tax, it was a $1,500 flat fee, and we changed that back in 20, I believe it was 2021. We went to the schools' facilities tax, which is a dollar per square foot. I won't get into the intricacies of how that's all collected. Now, Ms. Bell is here, our codes director. She's a lot more involved in that than, than we are, but that, that's the big difference. When we switched from the development tax to the schools' facilities tax, that's, that's the big difference. Now, as far as, if somebody buys a lot in a subdivision and doesn't try to permit it or anything, is it a grandf, I mean, it's an approved lot, it's there if they buy it, and that could be a situation with some of these, there are some that probably have bought multiple lots in a subdivision, they just have, they've just kept the other one so nobody builds next to them. You know, that could, they may never have any plans to build on it, but it is a lot that can be built on. They could pull the permit at any time. Now, if they pull the permit, of course, it would have to be based on whatever codes and things are in effect at that time, but as far as the lot itself, it's an approved lot. Once it's recorded, it's there, it doesn't really go anywhere, so, and their approval is still valid, just if they permit it, they, they would have to follow the, the current rigs.
One other question, I'll be quiet. In terms of these lots that are not finished, does the developer have a timeframe when he's got to put that final coat on and get the final plat approved based on lots closed and occupied? How does that work?
You're talking about like the roads and things?
Right, yeah. Final top coat. When do we make that decision if they say, you know, I really don't want to put any more houses on here because it's keeping...
I believe it's 80%, but I'll let, 75% is good. I'll let Mike chime in with that.
Typically, when we see 75% of the lots in a section that have been, have their certificate of occupancy, that's when we say, hey, you need to pave the street or if binder has been down at least a year.
That's very helpful. Thank you, guys. Yeah.
Anyone else? Y'all been shut up for a week. You're lucky y'all to have some kind of questions here or any kind of discussion.
And as always, if you guys would like any additional information, if you'd like us to dig a little deeper into some of these, if you have a thought and say, hey, how about, could you research this? I mean, just let us know. We're happy to do that.
Good report. I believe you have a further discussion?
I do. If there's no other questions or anything. I'd like to have a discussion on our plan development regulations, and we have a PowerPoint. Now, this is not on your iPads, but it should be on, yes, it's on the big screen, so just kind of follow along, and I'm going to sit here and talk for a little while, but if you've got questions, obviously, feel free to, to ask those. But you'll recall that this has been something that we've kind of had on our minds for the last, I'll even say, couple of years, really, something that we've discussed and have wanted to discuss in more detail. You'll recall that we did have a planning commission board of zoning field training session with Consolidated Utility District with them. Again, want to thank them for allowing us the use of their facilities and had a really robust discussion. We're really happy about that and what, any possibilities of some possible issues and things that they're dealing with, things that we might be able to help with. But I just kind of wanted to go over just a few things today, just to kind of run through a quick overview of plan developments and then open it up for discussion, so Mike go ahead into the next slide. So what I want to talk about today really is, you know, our current regulations. I'm not going to go into just a whole lot of detail there, just to kind of give you an overview, some of the concerns that we've heard from utility companies, from the planning commission, even from our own staff. We've listed a few potential amendments. Now, this is just things that we've kind of brainstormed. There's no, we're not recommending anything necessarily, but just to give you some ideas to start discussion, and then finally discussion and questions. So let's go ahead and go to the first, next slide, I should say. Our current regulations in the zoning ordinance, plan developments are found in chapter nine. Now, you'll see that there are five different sections, the kind of the generic purpose section that goes through several items, I think eight different items that we look at, what the specific standards for review are, what the procedure for review are, what we look for in 904 under an actual application, how that works, and then other issues that, that we deal with as well. Just as a little bit of background, the plan development regulations that we're under were actually crafted prior to the adoption of the current zoning ordinance that we have. Several years back, I want to say like 2009, 2010 timeframe, we actually undertook a pretty detailed study of the current rigs that we had at that time. It made a lot of, we pretty much completely overhauled the system that we look at for plan developments. So when we went under the new zoning code, our current ordinance, we just kind of brought these in, we made a little tweaks to them here and there, but for the most part, they are the same as they were back when we originally adopted these amendments back in 2010. So just to kind of give you an idea of how long these have been in effect, so go ahead and, and our next. Again, we're going to talk some about the concerns, again, those expressed by the utility companies that we've talked with, expressed by the planning commission, and also expressed by staff. So let's talk about those expressed by the utility companies. During our training session with CUD, you'll recall that we did have a pretty robust discussion about different items that they had some concerns about, and I will say that we have representatives here from both CUD and Middle Tennessee Electric that are, are available for if there's any questions or if they want more specifics about some of these things. But some of the things that we deal with, and you see that last bullet point on there, issues magnified with narrow or smaller lots. A lot of the developments that we see in our plan developments, and we'll get to that here in just a few minutes, deal with the smaller lots, smaller lot widths and those kind of things, and the issues that those create with utility encroachments and conflicts that's generally between the different utility companies, looking at the easements that are required or there are separations that are necessary, can those be met with the smaller lots, narrower lots. Landscaping conflicts are in there as far as, you know, can somebody put street trees out? Can they put trees in their front yard? When you have smaller lots, especially with the step tank easements and things, that makes it more difficult to actually place any kind of a street tree or any, with just a, any kind of real landscaping in the front yard except for maybe against the house, some small shrubbery. Driveway alignment is something that also comes into play, trying to make sure that there's room to actually get the driveways into the lots in order to access the homes. That doesn't even consider also the drainage conflicts as well that we tend to see. All this also has to take into account that there are drainage easements that need to be dealt with, especially on the fronts of some lots as, you know, when you get the easements on the crosslots, going back to the larger easements behind them. Construction issues, it may look good on paper, but out in the field, things don't always work as, as they would on paper. And again, those are typically magnified, and we see these narrow or smaller lots. So if you go on to the next item, items that have been expressed by the planning commission that they're concerned about, again, the smaller lot sizes is something that we've talked more and more about as time has gone on. Looking at increased density in the rural area, as far as, do we want to see these smaller lot subdivisions in the more rural areas where you see primarily acreage lots and things? Is it more appropriate to look at these closer to the SIG limits where you see more of that type of development than you would in the rural areas? We've also had some discussions on just not wanting to see a whole lot of on-street parking and then having adequate space in the driveway for multiple cars, and then also areas for visitor parking, people that have, you know, get-togethers at their homes and things like that. Is there enough, is there enough area there for them to, to park in those developments? So moving on, and, and these by no means are an exhaustive list of the, of the concerns that we've heard. These are kind of the major ones, so there may be others out there, and again, we can open that up for discussion as we go. These are the ones that are expressed by planning staff. Again, we talk about drainage easements on these smaller lots. This really becomes an issue, especially in the backyards where you may not have much of a backyard, most of it's in easement. Somebody wants to come in and they want to put a fence on the property, they're not supposed to put the fence in the easement, so that really limits the amount of backyard area that they have. And unfortunately, some of the folks that buy these lots, a lot of them are sight unseen. They don't realize a lot of this, so by the time they realize just how small their backyard is, it's too late, they moved into the house and they're, they have what they have. We have seen setback issues with things like HVAC units. We have taken some measures to help with that, but it becomes more of an issue again with narrower lots. We do see a lack of room for accessory structures, be those fences wouldn't be included in that as well, but pools and sheds and different things. There's just limited room for these things on these smaller lots. This kind of goes back to the, the parking. Garage is being used as storage, even if counted for parking requirements, and several of the pattern books that we've seen, they will say, okay, well, we've got X amount of spaces in these driveways, but we also have one or two spaces in the garage, knowing full well that a lot of people use their garage for storage, not necessarily for storage of the vehicles, but for storage of all the other stuff that they've got. I throw myself into that category. And also, we talked briefly about our purpose statements in section 901. Again, these are kind of generalized statements, but do the plan developments that we have meet these purpose statements? You know, are they, are they innovative in that sense, or are they just really attempts just to try to get more lots out of a, of a development? So those are some of the, those are some of the concerns that have been expressed by staff. So some ideas for some potential amendments, I'm just going to go over three just briefly. And again, this is really meant for more of a discussion, just to kind of set the stage for a little bit of back and forth with the planning commission, kind of get their thoughts. But I want to talk a little bit about setbacks, defining what density is, and then also talking about some minimum size and width requirements. So setbacks, the only, the only, when it comes to plan developments, as you know, a lot of these are, you kind of craft your own zoning district, roughly is what this, is what this equates to. So the only requirement for any setbacks is enlisted in chapter nine, is there is a requirement for 15-foot separation between buildings. Now, we typically see that in most developments, we've asked them to do seven and a half feet on either side. We did see some developments in the past that were doing the five and 10, want to do five on this side, we'll do 10 on the other side, which would give the 15 foot. We ran into some situations where it wasn't spelled out as well as it should have been on the plat, and we ended up having some issues where, well, a couple of these were too close. This guy wanted the five foot over here, this guy wanted the five foot on that side. Well, now you have 10-foot separation. If you do seven and a half and seven and a half, that becomes less of an issue, you don't have to worry about that so much. We also have asked them if they insist on the five and 10, that they show them specifically on the plat which one's the five and which one's the 10, so there's no, there's no confusion as to who has to build the what setback. But some issues that we've also discussed from a code standpoint, looking at these, is it measured from a foundation or is it measured from the eve or the gutter? There are separation requirements listed in the ordinance, again, of the 15 foot, but there are some allowed encroachments into those. The problem is with these smaller setbacks, if you start getting too close, you start running into codes issues, and, and I can let Ms. Bell talk more about that, but the fire, they have to be like different eves and gutters and different things that go too close have to be fire rated and those kind of things. So that's an issue that we've dealt with when it comes to these smaller setbacks. So a possible, a possible amendment to the ordinance could be to just require larger side setbacks and also do a better job defining how that measurement is to be made. Again, is it from the foundation, is it from the eve, gutter, those kind of things. So that's just a quick overview of setbacks. Density, want to park here for just a couple of minutes. In our ordinance and that definition you have on that first bullet point, that comes directly out of our zoning ordinance. It's the number of dwelling units permitted per acre of land in the zoning ordinance. Okay? That comes, again, that's directly out of our, of our definitions. What we typically see in these PUD pattern books, we will get a, a lot of statements, especially in the introductory part, where we'll say, we're asking, I'm just going to throw a number out there just to, for, you know, just for use, but it'll say, hey, we're proposing 200 lots. Under the zoning that's there, we could get 300, but we don't want 300, we just want to have the 200 lots. Well, that's not realistic because they were never going to get 300 lots under the conventional zoning to begin with. Once you look at things like your roads and your easements, your wetlands, floodways, steep slopes, those kind of things. So it's, it's not really a fair comparison saying, yeah, well, we're allowed to get 300, but we're only asking for 200, so this is actually less than what we were allowed to get. Again, they were never going to get that many to begin with. So something that we've talked about is the possibility of measuring density a little[1716.41] bit differently. Maybe we look at it from a standpoint of, okay, you calculate your density not just on the gross area of the lot, or the tract that you're looking at, but taking out things like roads and easements, say like 10, 15, 20% just off the top, wetlands and flood, just taking those things out, and then calculating your density based on that, that would be more of a fair comparison on that. So that was a thought that we had as far as density from that standpoint. And might go on to the last slide, couple of slides here. And minimum size and width, again, similar to setbacks, there is no defined minimum lot width or minimum lot size, frontage, anything like that in the zoning ordinance when it comes to planned developments. We have seen lots that have ranged in size from about 5,500 square feet up to about 15,000 square feet in planned developments. Lot widths have ranged anywhere from 53 feet and up. Our more recent planned developments, and we've had a lot of discussion with the developers about this, are around 7,000 square feet, and I say ish, just because it's, sometimes it's like 7,200 or something like that, but generally that's, that's been about the floor that we've seen recently. And we've seen them predominantly 60 feet in width, but again, that brings up questions, is that even wide enough? Go on to the next slide, Mike, please. So that kind of goes back to some possible solutions to that, again, is counting lot size, excuse me, I kind of jumped gears here. Some thoughts that we had on maybe increasing the lot size on these is to calculate the lot size only on the area outside of easements and setbacks. So if they say, hey, we're going to have a minimum 7,000 square foot lot, okay, that's the area that's going to be outside of any easements, inside of any setbacks and those kinds of things. So your, the lots themselves will be larger than that, but the actual area that they could develop in, their buildable area would be 7,000 square feet, as an example. Also, we could require a minimum lot width and/or street frontage. Lot width is measured at the front setback line, that's defined in the ordinance. So we might want to clarify, if we want to do a minimum lot width, I think we need to make sure we include street frontage as well. Based on the information that we've received from the utility companies, 65 feet is pretty much the drop dead. It shouldn't get any less than that. Again, when you look on paper, they can get it all to work, but in the field, it's a different story. And again, we've got representatives here that can go into more detail about that. They're far more knowledgeable about that than I am. So that just kind of gives you an idea of some of the things we've thought about from a minimum size and width standpoint. Mike, if you can go on to the next slide. So that's just a quick overview of some of the things we'd like to talk about, get some discussion going. And from there, I'll be happy to answer questions, and just kind of curious to see what direction the planning commission would like to go with this.
So going back to the slide about side setbacks and the recommendation of changing those, if I'm thinking correctly, we're already seeing situations where houses have to be staked by a surveyor because this, they're so tight within the setbacks. So if we reduce the setback number, that reduces the square footage of the house. It's kind of the point we're at in some developments. So in order to do that, we'd have to increase the lot size, which is what you're recommending. So they kind of go together.
Yeah, they do kind of work together in that way. Now, you know, I'm not saying that there's not a development out there where they want smaller lots because they want smaller homes. Okay, that's fine. But, you know, we want to do it in such a way where we're at least minimizing the conflicts that we're seeing from a staff standpoint and from utility standpoint.
And that's what I want to make sure, is we think through the potential conflicts, and I know you guys are doing that, and I'm trying to think through it myself on the fly here. If we reduce, if we increase the setbacks that are required, then it either reduces the square footage, or we have to increase the lot size to maintain the same square footage of house footprint. So if, I know it's not every development, but I remember you guys mentioning before that we've actually had to have surveyors stake out house corners because everything was so tight.
It was so tight, yeah.
And I think that's getting where it's constructability issues. I think that's, we're creating our own problems, or, like you said, the lines work on the papers, but when you go to dig the trench and put all this stuff in, I mean, you're, you're going to either have to start stacking vertically because the horizontal, we're running out of horizontal space to put all this stuff in. So I'm for increasing these. I know PUDs, when I first came in, were supposed to be innovative and allowing some, some unique developments, and we've seen some through the years and have a lot of green space and some usable, unusable areas that were made into greenways and some other things. So to promote that and to try to continue that, and I'm big on letting someone be able to plant a tree in their front yard. That's, that's one of the things with all the easements and the setbacks and the step tanks and driveway and everything else we put in, and I don't even see a place someone could plant a dogwood in their front yard and not violate an easement. And that, to me, that seems a little extreme and not really allowing somebody to enjoy their, their home. And years down the road, I live in an older subdivision, and now those oak trees are 15, 18-inch diameter, and they provide good shade, they're tall, and it's nice green space canopy, and I'd like that for anybody else that would like to have that, and that's just not possible in some of these. So I appreciate the direction we're going and just trying to think through some of the elements to keep from having other conflicts down the road.
Right. And I appreciate that. You bring up open space, and that wasn't anything that we put on here, but just to give you a little bit of background on that, when we first came up with these PUD regulations, again, this was back in 2010, 2011, the requirement was for 20% open space. Now during the, when we were changing everything over to the new ordinance, that got reduced to 10%, which, which is fine. You know, is that something that the planning commission would like to look at? Just everything's on the table at this point. So again, there's not a slide specifically to that, but I did want to at least mention that at one time it was higher than it is now as far as required green space in a subdivision, or a planned development subdivision.
And do you feel like some of that will sort of self-correct if we're having them take out of the top the roadways, the easements, the sinkholes and things?
It might.
May increase that a little bit by?
Yeah, it might. Now, I don't think it's going to help in the regard as far as the, like the street trees and things, because that, we don't count that as the open space anyway.
Correct.
But some of these other things might have an effect, like the size and the widths and things like that.
Messengers? Will our comprehensive plan, Doug, address any of these concerns or issues?
Probably not to this, I would consider this more of a micro-level issue. Now, I think where we start seeing the plan come into play a little bit more is where do you want to see these kind of developments? Do you want to see these in the more rural areas, or do you want to see these in the more, I'll say, urban, suburban-type areas? I think it'll play a part there. As far as the issues we're talking about, the, the plan, a comprehensive plan like that doesn't really delve down into that sort of specific. That's really more of what the ordinance, the zoning ordinance is for itself.
Some of the things that, I'm not sure, but it's been between 12 and 15 years, I guess, since we've started doing PUDs. Is that, is that pretty accurate, pretty close?
Well, no, we were doing plan developments even under the older code. They were, they were handled differently than they are now. They were conditional use permits on top of the existing zoning. Now they're their own specific zoning district. But we've been doing, even when I first started working here, you know, going on, it's over 17 years now, we were, there were plan developments even back then. So now, under the way that we're currently doing them, I would say for about 10 to 15 years, yes, under the, under the new way we do them.
If I remember right, it was like 2010 or something like that.
That's when we made these changes, something around that timeframe, that's right.
So is staff coming up with recommendations, or are you expecting the commission itself to make those recommendations?
Well, what we have done is brought some things that we think can be changed. We'd like some guidance from you as to whether you like the direction that we've identified, if you're comfortable going down that road. We didn't go into a whole lot of detail with some of these things, just because we didn't know what you all would want to see. Now, if you give us the green light, the next step would be for us to craft some more specific amendments and things to bring for your consideration. Since this would be a change to the ordinance, it would have to go through the public hearing process here and then at the Board of Commissioners. But that, that's kind of how I see the process moving forward after we get some direction from you on it.
So the comprehensive plan will not address minimum lot size or any of those issues?
Not specifically for plan developments. Now, you might look at that from a standpoint of if we're in the more rural area, do we want to see a minimum lot size in these rural areas versus the more suburban slash urban areas, as you start getting closer to the, closer to the municipalities? That's kind of like the overarching, the comprehensive plan's kind of the umbrella that everything else sits under. So if you come out, let's say the comprehensive plan makes some sort of a recommendation of minimum lot size, let's say two acres, five acres, or something like that, in the more rural areas of the county, then the ordinances would be tailored at that point. Any changes we would need to make, the ordinance would have to be changed to reflect the plan. So at that point, we would say, okay, the comprehensive plan says we want to see minimum lot sizes of X acres in the more rural area. This development here that we're looking at, even though it's a plan development, is recommending, or is asking for smaller lots than that. Is that something we feel is, we're comfortable with? Is it something that we think is consistent with the plan? That's how that would work. So the comprehensive plan will kind of make some broad overall recommendations, the, and then the ordinances are amended to suit that. But when it comes to these planned developments, again, it's a little, they operate under the recommendations of the overall plan, is how that would work. I hope I'm being clear.
I'm not sure how to address this. This information that you got is absolutely positive. Some of the things that we have to be working on, looking to the future. I'd like that information in front of me, where I could take a look at it, instead of up on, up on the wall. I want that information written, hard copy in front of me, where I can take a look at it, to ask questions. Would it be more advisable, Mr. Chairman, to, to have some type of work session and work through these things as it related to each one of those bullet items, and have a discussion based upon maybe some staff recommendations and input from us after we've had a chance to go through this and digest this a little bit? Would that be a better approach to things? We could add some type of a work session at the end of our next nine o'clock meeting or something like that? Would that be a better approach to it? I'm, I'm struggling with trying to ask questions for stuff that's up on the board that's come and gone. And Doug, you do a really good job of speaking quickly.
That's the Yankee in me, sorry.
And some of the, some of the things that are interesting to me and have been on my, it's been a hot button for me or on my radar screen for quite some times, are, are minimum lot sizes, especially in those PUDs. The feedback that we've gotten as a commission deals with real people who move into those places and realize after they got in there, they don't have room enough to pass a baseball with their son in a backyard because the backyard really doesn't exist, or to put up some type of a privacy fence to keep their pet or their dog in. Some of those things, I think, really need to be addressed. And for us to talk that through, I think would be a better solution. I don't want to delay things, I don't want to spread things out, but I'd like this information, and I'd also like for us to have just a, I don't know, I don't know why you want to call it a work session, is what's in my mind, that we can spend a couple of hours after we've thought about this with our recommendations and can have that discussion at some point in time. Every one of these also, there are probably larger counties, and we've compared ourselves to Williamson and Wilson County and some of those to see kind of what they're doing as it relates to minimum lot sizes and how they calculate certain things. I'd also like to see what other folks are doing, if, and maybe not have to reinvent the wheel per se, but, you know, if I were to pull something, try to pull something out today without input from everybody else, it probably would, would not be the best solution. So I don't know where to go with this, other than in 100% accord and full agreement that, that every one of those bullet items need to be addressed and need to be addressed as quickly as possible. With the way that we're growing, these things have to be addressed in conjunction with our comprehensive plan. So I would, I would, I would suggest that we don't delay, but also don't rush to the decision-making process without us as a commission having the opportunity to fully discuss this. So I would recommend that this information, hard copies be sent to us, let us discuss it, and then we go through a work session, listen to what staff has to say and recommendations that they may have, and then listen to each one of us commissioners as to what, how we feel and what our recommendations are going to be. I'd also caution the commission that we're not going to be in 100% full accord on this, but what I'd like to see is a consensus that we can all agree on as we go forward, and something that we can adjust to if we see that that's not working in the best interest of the citizens of the county as we go forward. How do I do, Doug?
That's fine. No, I mean, we'd be more than happy to, during our next day meeting, we can have more detailed information. Again, this wasn't meant to be, this was really more just to get discussion started. This wasn't meant to be, these are specific recommendations, this is the way that we recommend doing it. But no, and we can get copies. What I'll do is, when I get back to my office, I'll send the PDF that you're looking at on the screen, I'll send that to the whole commission, so you can start kind of whetting your appetite a little bit for our next day meeting, and we can have more specifics at the, the next day meeting. I don't have any issue with that at all. Obviously, as you look at these slides and maybe go back through the, the presentation that was made today, just looking back at the video of it, if you guys have ideas, if you've got questions or things, you know, obviously, you don't have to wait until the next meeting to let us know about that. If you think of something, just shoot me an email, give me a call. We'd be more than happy to, to incorporate whatever it is, questions you have into that, that next presentation. So we're happy to do that.
So those three things, potential amendments are things that we get this information, we should be targeting those three specific?
Well, those are the three we brought, like I said, we may even brainstorm some others, like we talked briefly about open space here, we can talk about that. You know, I mentioned the parking thing just a little bit. I didn't really have anything specific to mention on that, but we can discuss that as well. I mean, if we're, if we're going to have an actual work session, we can make it a little more structured, where we kind of consider these items kind of individually, if you will.
Chairman, Chairman Phillips, I think you've brought up some very good topics there that probably will be where we'll have to go there. You know, you, you mentioned the comprehensive plan. I sat on that steering committee, and I think what we will be dealing with and what you'll see there is the fact of what the people of Rutherford County have brought forward to us and what their concerns are. I've had the opportunity, Doug, I think I've made every one of those, all except plane view, I didn't get the plane view over there. And we have seen what the people are concerned about right here in the county. And one thing was density in particular. Density is a concern of the, of the people out there. That was one of the things they put up on the chart and talked about. They all talked about more green space, they talked about saving farmland and whatever. Funny thing, just Saturday night, late Saturday night, I'm sitting there and, and an individual who's over here at the University of Tennessee Extension offices, who is working with UT Extension all across the state of Tennessee, looking and trying to recognize where farmland has been lost. And he had just received in Rutherford County where we have lost farmland. And I have that right here in my hand. He sent it to me, he said, I thought you might want to see this. That's the worst case of measles I've ever seen in my life. Every one of those red spots that you see there, gentlemen, is where we have lost farmland in Rutherford County. And it's quite shocking. He's also sending me a lot of information that will also have green space, green space production, ag production, it'll have all these different things that we're getting there and whatever. I'm also talking to him, what are the counties doing? And this discussion of what you had here, I just happened to write here down, down here while you were talking there, something I thought of, that I just wrote down, I said, "I saw a long time ago that we were headed for trouble when we discontinued allowing mailboxes in subdivisions." And I don't know, y'all think, well, what's wrong with him? That was our first stop at doing something that we don't even allow people to put a mailbox in front of their house to recognize who they are and where they live, and for our first responders to locate their places. We've turned them into a number. And I remember my first house, the biggest thing I ever done when I bought that house was putting a mailbox out front, designating this is where I live. But we took away the mailboxes and put these little places out there where they're just something like an apartment or a mobile home lot, and that's where they go get their mail now. And we had to designate those places, a kiosk out there. And I said then, I said, "We are headed down a primrose path to destruction." And I said that at that time, and I didn't like it. Well, now, we are putting lots so small, we don't know where to put the utility boxes. CUD is having the difficulty placing the, the step system tanks, and people are building rock gardens on top of the tanks. I ran into that just a few weeks ago. So what do we do? And where do we go? And I think that's what our staff has brought up here. Okay, where are we? What do we need to do? Where do we need to look at the density of these developments and how we're going? And I think exactly what you're talking about there, I think the last time we did a comprehensive plan, we even did that in work sessions. Took us a while to even go from there. After the steering committee brings it to us, we'll have to go through a approval session there. And the only way we're going to work this out is for us sitting here and everybody talking and putting their two cents in, how we do it. Out in the rural area, as I look at this right here, when I go around and talk to Out in the rural area, as I look at this right here, when I go around and talk to people, they're all wanting to go back to one acre. Had in the past. That's where they want to go. I understand that as the closer you get into the municipalities, that is not a possibility. I understand that. But where we are, and you take a look at that map right there, that's where we are there. That's the only way you're going to preserve any of this out there, that's the only way that you're going to actually see some of this, and that's where we are possibly headed. That's where all the other counties are going, Williamson County's at five acres. I know a county or two that's at two acres right now, they're already doing it. And that's where we'll possibly be going. But I think as what Chairman Phillips is talking right here, we're going to have to sit down and talk, okay, where do we go from here? Where do we help our utilities, like Middle Tennessee Electric, CUD, to actually do and make it work for the people out here? We're not talking about what's best for, I come from an agrarian career, that's where I grew up. I was actually born between two cotton patches. I was born in a log house out here at Rock Vale between two cotton patches, and I grew up there. And I grew up thinking what you could put on an acre of land, and it wasn't how many houses you could put in that acre, it was how many rows of something to grow. Well, when we're talking about it now, we're talking about an acre of land, what, what can you put on there now? And it's what can you grow? Well, we've got to think about that somewhat in Rutherford County now. When you talk about how many houses you can put on an acre, what does it grow? Grows children, it grows people with jobs and things of this sort of thing. But yet it also grows a situation of problems of infrastructure on how you provide those people to get to where they got to go and how they make those livings. And we've got to look at a way of doing it in the most efficient manner. And we're sitting here planning that, doesn't it scare you to death? Think we should be thinking that way, and we, but we've got to do it. Or Rutherford County, I always had a gentleman tell me one time, the end of the world comes when the man in front has no place to go. Everything halts and stops. Well, I've seen days out here on Church Street, I thought that man was already there, he had no place to go, and we had already stopped. So I think, Mr. Demossis, what we're talking about here is bring this back, get it to us, and we put in one of those work sessions to discuss where we want to go.
Does that sound reasonable, Commission?
Chair, excellent topic. I'm one of them, I'm, I'm for the five acres personally, definitely for an acre, but let, let me, let me give you some food for thought, and Tanya can out for what I'm going to say. These constructions of the homes really need to dictate the separation, and I'm going to give you a couple examples, a slab home versus a crawl space home. If I'm running a piece of gas pipe, that gas pipe comes in 21-foot sections. If I'm running a sewer under the house, it come in 20-foot sections. Now, you can chop them up, you can work them under there, but if you're placing these houses this close together, and I'm trying to stick a piece of gas pipe under this house, or I'm going to put a sewer pipe under the house, imagine at a 10-foot clearance, the situation you get into, fence gets put up or something. We're, starting tomorrow, we're going to find out how many folks have busted pipes. They already know they got frozen pipes, but they don't know how many of them's busted. Once this thaw comes, they're going to know. Good start would be with your restoration companies, talk to them about the crawl space and having to dig out ductwork and stuff that's ruined. Give them five feet to do that, 10 feet to do that. And they got somebody that's moved in that don't even like their neighbors to start with, so now they got stuff that they're trying, they're trying to work around that. What we created is a mess, trying to put houses this close together. Now slab houses is a little bit different, you can do a slab house, doesn't really matter that much. But if somebody buys a crawl space home and they're going to want to remodel it down the way, or they've got to refurbish it, they can't even get a beam in the side of their house if they want to go up, right? It's just a mess. The other thing I think needs going, and Doug, I'll, I'll email you my thoughts on this as far as things, but the length of cars and stacking cars in, we already know they're not using their garages, so they're using the house, they're using the road in front of their houses. You, mechanical contractors can help with this discussion, and Tanya has got a good relationship with those folks as well. The builders and restoration companies, I think it's got to be included with these utility guys that already know that if you got to pin a corner on a house in order to get the next house and get the next house, that is, if you think that's tough, work in a 21-foot joint of pipe under a house. Crazy. The other question I'd have is, if we're going to brick the homes, then we got scaffolding, and then we got piles of brick we're trying to work up next to the house. They're working around scaffolding, they're working around the brick, trying to get it all worked in, so, again, crawl space is different than slab home, I get it from a construction standpoint. But utility guys, your restoration companies, your mechanical contractors, as well as your builders, all need to be in that discussion. And I can assure you, what they come up with far outdo what we can do in this room right here, because they know what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Misters, anyone else? Mr. Bogle?
I think one of the goals that I would like to see come out of this is something, something that bothers me for the future is these small spaces and people realize, I know there's some buyer beware things that, along the way, but when people move in, they realize they can't put a trampoline or a swing set because of a drainage easement, they can't plant a tree in their front yard. I feel like we're driving them to move somewhere else, it's not somewhere they want to stay any length of time, probably five years or less, and that's just a guess. And then over time, that becomes a rental, because no one wants to put down roots and stay there for, forever and ever, or, or the length of their life. And I, I don't feel like that's quality, I think we can do better. And so I want to see that as a result of, of what we talk about here. And I'm all for a work session because I think we can come up with something really good that, that works for everybody. The other thing, I don't want to violate the, the zoning ordinance, of course, I know you guys will keep us out of doing that, but when we identify those nodes in certain communities and areas that are maybe a small commercial element, and then, I don't want to go with the rings on a tree, so to speak, but density close to that area for those PUDs, but I don't know what that radius would be, and then we work out from there, and that density and reduces to where we get more green space. But I can see a little bit denser PUD around a node or an identified area that's, we've identified in the, in the plan as, as commercial, and this is what's going to help that community thrive, but then expanding from there, then it gets to be more green space, more green space. I don't know how to make that happen, I'm not a planner by trade, but that's just something I think we can work toward and maybe align some regulations along that, because I know you can't just go with the, the urban density around what's currently there, because as we work our way out, you, we'll work our way into something that's not feasible, I, I believe. So just thinking through all those things, I'm like, Jeff, you know, you see the, see the elements on the slides here, and I start thinking and thinking, I want, I've been trying to jot down some notes, but I think a work session, we can really hash some of these things out. So I appreciate you guys bringing that to us, because that's something that's been weighing on me for several years, is, is to what we're putting out there, that I want people to be able to feel like they can own their property, manage their property, live on their property, and, and it comes down to the, not being able to buy a trailer or a boat and put in their own lot or, or something like that. I mean, those, those are tough things. I have a larger lot, and, and I couldn't imagine not to be able to have a couple of trailers and some things that I have, and try to keep those in neat places, but it's just the space is at a premium, so, thank you for that, I look forward to the sessions.
Okay. Anyone else? Ossie?
No, I just want to say thank you for all the input, and yeah, we'll definitely get on preparing the work session for our next day meeting. But again, that's, well, that's all we really had with, with those last two items, so we're, we're done.
Our next planning commission meeting will be February the 12th, 2024, right here. So if there is nothing else, we are adjourned.